I guess we could get going then. What we'll do is I'll open up the hearing, it's hearing number twenty-one dash zero. Oh, wait a minute, that's last week. Hold on one second. Okay, just bear with me for a minute. Hold on one sec, I'll be right back, I put the coffee away.
Is Joe Bush present there?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I'm here.
There, yeah.
Okay. Now, just keep quiet.
Hold on one second, I don't know what I did with that, I just had my hands on it. And now when I went to pick it up, it was last week's meeting, hey, give me just a second to find what I did with it. It can't possibly be. Sorry about that, you guys, just. Alright, I gotta go in the other room, I just had my whole package in my hand, I don't know what I did with it, hold on a minute.
Are you looking at his hand?
Do you want for the hearing number, because I think it's twenty-one oh two.
Right.
As it's listed.
One oh two.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it, I put up my pile of stuff that I was gonna bring down solid, but anyway. It's hearing number twenty-one oh two for Sled Road. Joe Bush is requesting a variance for a for an accessory building, my name is Dave Perry, I'm the chairman, we have Mark Carlisle, Rich Archer, Terry Gerard and Bob Fickell here as members. What this is, is this is a variance. Okay.
I'd just like to clarify, this was an appeal of the building inspector's zoning interpretation slash not issuing a.
Excuse, excuse me for a minute, if you could state your name clearly, and what I'll do is I'll go to explain how the hearing is gonna go. Then you could, and then you could give your name and we'll make sure that the clerk can get it down. Speaking of clerks, Rich, do you wanna do the honors of that tonight?
I have to pick up my daughter at seven, so I cannot.
Okay, Bob, could you do that?
I'll, I'll attempt it again, okay.
My god, Bob, you are my hero.
Okay, alright, so Dave Perry, the chairman, Bob Fickell's gonna be the acting clerk tonight. The first thing that I think that we have to do as a board is there is a, the way that the cover letter reads, it reads that you request for a special permit slash variance, I think the board has to have a little bit of discussion, and we have to have a motion and decide whether or not we're going to hear this as a variance or a special permit. Let's start off with Mark, since I'm looking at your smiling face. What do you wanna do about this, Mark, do you want to discuss what you think, what you think it should be, should it be a special permit or a variance? I think we have to determine which route we're gonna go, first of all.
Well, my thought is it's, it's a variance, is my.
I would tend to agree with you, Rich, what do you think about that?
Sorry, I can't, yeah, I can't see it any other way than a variance.
Bob?
Same here, variance.
Terry?
As it's described, it appears to be a variance.
Okay, then I will make a motion that this hearing proceeds as, as it's a, as a variance, and a variance is required from sections one point five two, three point two and five point one, that it's not a special permit, it's a variance. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Dave Perry, aye?
Terry Gerard, aye.
Mark Carlisle, aye.
Bob Fickell, aye.
And Rich Archer, aye.
Okay, what we did is we decided to do a little bit of housekeeping here, we had to determine whether or not this was gonna be a variance or a special permit, and the board voted unanimously that this was going to be a variance. Now that we know which direction we're heading in, let me describe a couple of things for the appellant and anybody else that's listening. Because this is a variance, it's for very specific things that have to be met. There has to be special conditions affecting the land of the building, there has to be a hardship of the land of the building, not of the applicant. It has to be consistent of the intent of the bylaw, and you also have to show that it's not harmful to the public good or the neighborhood. Now these, um, hold on. Now these are, this criteria is written by the Commonwealth, this isn't, this isn't a the town of Ashburnham bylaws, this is the Massachusetts state bylaws from to be able to grant a variance, now also, in, in our vote, the zoning board of appeals has what's called a super majority vote, that means four people have to vote in favor of something for it to carry, not three, it's not a majority, it's, it's a super majority. Now, what I will explain to you is how the, is how this goes, goes along, I'll open up, the hearings opened up, I will ask the applicant or his agent to give a presentation of what it is he would like to do. At any time during your presentation, any of the board members can interrupt you and ask for clarification or ask you.
Dave froze.
Dave froze.
Come back, Dave.
On, on anything like that, and after I'm done doing that, I'll see if there's any other, if there's any people from the general, general public that wanna be heard on this, and after we, because it is a public hearing by definition, so the public really needs to be heard, so after we're done listening to any of the board information, this board's questioning of the applicant, we will, I will go over what the, what the decision-making process is, we have a certain timeframe to make the decision on a variance, a variance and a special permit are different. There's also an appeal process, if anyone is aggrieved by our decision, I'll explain the appeal process at the end, and we also, I'll explain that our decision has to be recorded at the registry of deeds as part of your deed. So with that said, if you could state your name clearly, and so that we can get that down for the recording, also, I should tell everybody that's here that this, this Zoom meeting is recorded, that, that Bob is gonna be taking the notes, so it's important that you state your name clearly, so that we can get that down and we know who's saying what, and with all that said, let's get this party started.
Alright, so Joseph Bush, I guess first would like to clarify that I did file for an appeal against the building inspector's decision, zoning interpretation, in addition, filed for variance and potentially special permits in consideration of how those conversations go. So I'd also like to hear the appeal process, as the board understands as well, and how we work through that in conjunction with this variance process.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, could you run that question by me again?
That I had filed an appeal of the building inspector's decision not to issue a building permit on this as well.
That's what this, that's what this says, this is, yeah, that's what you were doing.
Okay, and that falls under a variance.
We just had a finding, there was a variance required.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
We just had a finding at the beginning that a variance is required.
Versus a special permit.
Okay, so what happens with the appeal filing that I did?
Okay, well, what happens now is you, you appealed that with the, with the building commissioner, and the building commissioner, once she denies you, then you have the right to appeal it to the zoning board of appeals, which is what you did, and now we're in front of the zoning board of appeals, and we're going to hear your appeal, and we're going to listen to you, explain why you think that the building commissioner's decision is either erroneous, or that the board should grant you, the board should grant you a variance for, for the sections that she has quoted here.
Dave, can you just, can you just repeat to him the, the four qualifications or, or requirements to meet a variance again?
Certainly, certainly. Because, because the board determined that this is a variance, this is what the law is that applies to the hearing for a variance. State law says that there has to be special conditions affecting the land or the building, there has to be a hardship of the land or the building, not of the applicant, it has to be consistent with the intent of the bylaw, and it cannot be harmful to the public good or the neighborhood, those are the four different criterias that you have to meet for the board to consider granting a variance.
Okay. Has the board read my entire package that was submitted in my letter with legal explanations and other matters, or should I go through that as well?
I've read it.
Okay, thank you. So I guess I'll start out with the, just the general gist of the project, essentially, I own a four point one parse acre parcel on Sled Road, which is on Lake Watautahic, it's a hammerhead lot, so where the actual water area is, is pretty far from where the house is going to be built. The house will literally be either twelve hundred feet by road or down a very, very steep rocky cliff, five hundred feet from where the house will be located, I already have the, I have the lot surveyed, I have the lot, I've done all the testing, I did the perk testing, that's all cleared and passed and filed with the board, but we are not planning on building a house there, at least for another year or two, until our children are ready to move over into the combined school, we live in Westminster, so once they combine Oakmont, we're gonna be building a house up there. So at this point, we certainly intend to build a shed, this is going to be used for primarily storage, a place to put our stuff for the day, and essentially have a little spot to use for day use, which would be in harmony with the building in the future, the house in the future, in that there's really no reasonable access from the house down to the water area, which is obviously the prime feature of this lot. So it is a buildable lot, I've got, as I said, I've done the parking, I just did the survey with the Charlotte Billis, so everything's up to date, I did that within a year or so. And so my opinion is that the shed down there is really no harm, we're certainly not going to be living in a shed, that is one thing that I've heard from the town. You know, we are in the home here in Westminster, we have no plans on, on moving in and, you know, into a, you know, five hundred square foot shed or whatever it ends up being. So I guess in my eyes, this project is pretty harmless and has a high beneficial use to me, and certainly, again, hardship is we certainly can't build the house up there right now. And that's, that's just not in regards, and especially the way the housing market is right now, and building costs, we're in best interest of waiting that one out. So in addition to that, I laid out a pretty clear opinion through my read of the zoning bylaws of basically the building inspector's denial based upon the thought that a building must exist, and I think I've laid out pretty clearly there by use of the key definition of principal use, that is, does not say that the building must exist, must exist on that property, there's nowhere in the zoning bylaw that says, you know, basically that there's a condition precedent or a predecessor to building an accessory building. So I'm very clear on that within the zoning bylaws, and also attorney has reviewed that and made their opinion as well. So, but in interest of moving forward, I'm certainly willing to look at a variance, you know, not cause commotion here, but I hope that people have read what I had typed up and the interpretation of the bylaws, because I'll be honest, the way I look at those and I compare to other towns, which I do know in Massachusetts, some towns are very against this, but they write it in their zoning bylaws where it actually says an existing use must be in place before building an accessory building, whereas the Ashburnham zoning bylaws do not. And the only responses I've had is that it implies, but I think as I've laid it out in that legal argument, that going through the terms and going through the only applicable sections, there is no mention of an existing use needing to be there. It actually uses few juristic terms in the definition of principal use, therefore having a buildable lot, my interpretation is that this jives with the zoning bylaws, so willing to dissect that and kinda run to ground all these different areas, I don't know if that's the best use of board time right now, if we'd rather entertain a variance first, but certainly, I took a lot of time on that and have read through it thoroughly and had outside opinions of my interpretation of that. I've also included again towns such as Starling, which is a good example of what I would consider a very clear exclusion of building an accessory building prior to the primary use, and I just, I can't comprehend within the zoning bylaw, and especially the building inspector's letter to me that that makes any kind of sense, so. So that's where I'm at with the appeal, as far as the variance, you know, again, it's, it's gonna be a simple shed up on center block, set back, you know, a hundred and twenty feet back from the lake, up on a hill in the woods, not very noticeable, certainly looking at the neighborhood, I don't think it's gonna have any detriment to any of the existing neighbors or the presence of that, of that neighborhood, it will be a physically attractive looking building, this isn't gonna be some grown-up, you know, makeshift, makeshift shed or anything, it will be of nice character and choices. So again, this is really all for an effort to have my family be able to enjoy the lake and for the high amount of taxes that we pay on that lake, we would like to enjoy it.
Mr. Bush, if I might, I would have to assume that you got this letter from, from the, from the zoning commissioner dated April eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, and she states on definitions, one, section one point five definitions, an accessory building is a building devoted exclusively to a use subordinate to and customarily incidental to the principal use.
Yep.
That, I mean it.
No argument there, yep.
I, I, I don't agree with Sarah on everything, but I gotta agree with her on this, that this is, is pretty clear to me in the, in the definition for the, for the zoning bylaws of the town of Ashburnham, that is exclusively to a use subordinate to and customary incidental to the principal use. If you don't have a principal building, I don't see how you can have an accessory to something that's not there, but I'm, I'm an open-minded guy, if you.
I understand that, Dave, and the one piece that I think is really the key term here, I started in my earlier messaging, is that you need to look at the definition of principal use, and that's where I really think, if anything, this is in favor of my argument, is that, I don't know if you have that up in front of you, but read the principal use, the principal use is something, it is a structure or a lot, it's designed, arranged, or intended, or for which it may be used, occupied or maintained under this bylaw, there is no, I mean, you have to link it to that definition, and that definition does not say it must exist.
Okay. Hold on one second.
In my letter, I think I laid out pretty clearly there, and I know Sarah had referenced a few other areas of the bylaw, I just, I couldn't, I couldn't, you know, link them to this issue, they seem to be separate, non, non-applicable references to the zoning bylaws. Okay, well, it clearly says it does not, I mean, which may be or intended, I mean, those are things saying, as long as you have a lot that can support these things in the future, it doesn't say whether or not, yes, subordinate is a lesser value, subordinate and primarily customarily incidental to the principal use, okay, it doesn't say when, there's no when in the statement, in this zoning bylaw, anywhere.
Okay, well, if you look on section one point five under principal use, it says the main or primary purpose for which a structure or lot is designed, arranged or intended, or for which it may be, may be used, occupied and maintained under this bylaw. Again, the main or primary purpose for which a structure or lot is designed, so you're already saying that the accessory building you want to build is not going to be the main structure.
No, it is not, but it will be subordinate to in the future, and that's where it's designed, arranged, intended, or for which it may be used, that I intend this will be of lesser value than the house, and also a customarily incidental to the house that will be built there. The primary use of this lot is a residence, it's a residential lot, that is the principal use, right? So if you read the principal use terms, it doesn't say that needs to exist, it says which it may be used, intended. Those are all future terms, those are not, are being used, is being used, this must be here.
Well, you know, again, on the third, the third law, the, the, the third criteria that you have to meet is has to be consistent with the intent of the bylaw, so one of the things that this board has to do is we have to look at the bylaw and say, what was the author's intent of this, what were they intending to do? And from what I, from what I'm reading, I, I think that their intent was to see toward that there was a primary structure on the lot before you started putting accessory buildings there.
But.
But again, I, I consider myself an open-minded person.
Yeah.
I'm certainly willing to listen to you and your, your argument about it, or anybody else that would like to speak in favor of what it is you'd like to do, I want, I wanna take all the information in before I make a decision, but I'm just telling you how personally I'm feeling.
It froze again, Dave.
The thing about being frozen is you can't hear either.
Hey, Dave?
Yeah.
You were just, you were just frozen for about thirty seconds, so I'm not sure if we missed anything that you were saying.
Well, I'm sure it was nothing important. It was just that I was explaining the, the third criteria for the granting of a variance, and the, the third, the third criteria is that has to be consistent with the intent of the bylaw, and I was just explaining to Mr. Bush that, Bush, that we have to look at what was the author of the bylaw at the time, what were those authors trying to intend? And I, and I believe that their intent was to see toward that accessory buildings weren't built before a primary structure was there, but then I went on to say that, you know, I consider myself an open-minded person, and I'm willing to listen to all of his arguments, or if anybody else wants to argue in his favor, I'm willing to listen for it, but I was just explaining how I personally was looking at it, and that I was momentarily gonna ask the other board members for their input, and I guess, since I got you here already, Bob, what's, uh, do you have any questions for the applicant, or do you have any feelings about this?
I don't have any questions. I don't see any special conditions that are needed here, I don't see a hardship, and as you were saying, it's not consistent with the bylaw.
Well, I think we're getting the, the variance and the appeal mixed up here with the procedural. I, I think what we're looking for is that it's a clear interpretation of the zoning bylaws for the appeal, a variance is a separate, I think, order here.
We're arguing about the variance right now, basically.
Right, and I think, yeah, I agree with Terry, I think what we're trying to do here is just to see if you have any questions for Mr. Bush on any of this, because we have to go through the whole protocol of, once he's done, then we go on to the various neighbors or whomever has input, and then we can go on to where we land to discuss the deliberate.
Rich, what, what, you have any questions for the applicant?
Um, well, I, I feel like, I feel like he's a very good wordsmith, and we're, so whenever you are, what, what did you call, what were, what was your question as far as this procedure relates to a variance versus what?
An appeal, I have an appeal.
Appeal, yeah, so whenever you appeal, it becomes a variance, I mean, you're appealing her decision, which would need a variance to ratify that appeal. So this is the procedure, this is the correct procedure, these are not two different procedures.
Yep.
Okay, so that's the first thing, and then I also feel like we're trying to re, reverse engineer your argument where it says a building in which is conducted for the principal use of the lot on which it's located, but then you're saying principal use, but then you go to what principal use is, and it's the main or primary purpose for which a structure or lot is designed, arranged or intended, so you're starting with principal use, going back to use that as an argument as to what a primary residence is, to go back to why you should have this, instead of going forward.
Yeah, no.
Typically, you have a primary residence, you have a primary residence, and then you say what the principal use of that primary residence is, or that other, you know, you're, you're, you're reverse engineering that, and that's not how we typically do things, we, we follow it step by step forward, instead of trying to argue it backwards.
If I came across unclear, I guess I'm not linking it to the primary residence whatsoever.
Right, but that's what we are, we need, we need to, and that's the whole point, that's why you need a variance, it's because you don't have a primary residence.
Understood, but I guess my argument was that the definition of accessory building says it needs to basically be incidental to the principal use, so.
Of a primary residence. Of a primary residence, yes, you are right, but you're missing that, those two major words that change everything.
Yes, but again, I think the definition of principal use is my main point here in that it does not define that that must exist.
Right, but a primary residence does need to exist in order to then have a primary use, so again, you're, you're taking.
I guess I beg to differ that the primary, a primary use is not a primary residence.
No, but the primary use is in reference to the primary residence. The reason, the whole definition is there.
Correct, but again, the soul of the matter here is that the principal use, it, we're trying to establish intent of whether or not, you know, what comes first, if you have to have this principal use first or not.
Yes, and I'm suggesting that you do, you need to have a primary residence first, and then we can decide what the principal use is. So I, I'm just of the opinion that, yes, you are arguing that what is a principal use, and then reverting that back to primary residence, where I'm saying primary residence first, which is, I think, what the intent of the bylaw is, and then primary use comes secondary to that.
But I guess the, the definition of the accessory building should have used the term primary residence, that they use the term primary use.
Yes, because I think most logical people would know that that's in reference to the primary residence.
Uh, no, it's any use, I will write.
So beyond that, let me just ask you this, what is the hardship, because you do need to show that as well, and I've not seen that either.
The hardship is that I, I own a lot, a lakefront lot, which I pay high taxes on, and I am unable to use that as I wish to use and be able to store my boat stuff and have a place to get changed for swimming, and.
Yeah, it has to be, it has to be a hardship on the land or the property, not on you personally.
Yeah, I think it's, it opens it up for any other hardship, certainly.
Dave, do you wanna read that again?
Within the bylaw.
Dave, can you read that one more time, please?
Yeah, there has to be special conditions affecting the land or the building.
Keep going.
And it says the hardship of the land of the building, not of the applicant.
Okay, so that's what I would like you to address, please, sir.
Uh, the hardship of the land would be that in the future, when we build our residence, there is no, there is no reasonable access down to the water, to be able to enjoy that water. Uh, there is no reasonable access down to the water, uh, to be able to enjoy that water. Um, and that is the hardship. Of the land.
So, so once you build the primary residence, you're not going to be able to get to the water? Is that what you just said?
No, but we won't have to trek back and forth between the water and the building over twelve hundred feet or up a hundred foot rocky cliff.
So I, I, okay, let me just ask this. So. The hardship. I'm confused about the hardship in the sense that if you bought the house or if you built the house first. And then did the accessory building, there would be no hardship. There's only a hardship because there's no house?
Right, but we cannot build the building now because of, of financial hardship, I guess, if you want to put it that way.
Which is a personal thing. That's not a, that's not a land or a property thing. Which I totally get, by the way. But that's not a, that's not an acceptable hardship in a variance.
I. Don't know what kind of hardship you would like, I honestly.
Well, I would like one that's, that's listed. Within the acceptable reasons to have a hardship, which is on the property or land and not personal.
Okay.
Again, I feel for you and I understand what you're saying, but. That's where I cannot.
With the land, it's the lay of the land. It's a hammerhead lot. Uh, it's separated by a very long road. Or a five hundred foot rocky steep cliff, uh, to get down to that area.
Right, but if you built the house first, you'd be able to do this and there'd be no hardship.
Uh, yeah, I mean, that would bring us back to the argument of, uh, do you need to build the house first? Um, so I just. You know, I.
Well, no, it doesn't because, no, no, it really doesn't though. That's the thing. I'm sorry, but. There, there can't be a hardship be, you can't have, in my opinion, and I could be the only one on the board that feels this way. The only hardship that you have is one that's preventing you from needing a variance.
Okay, so I guess I'm not confident that the, um, the procedures are. Right here in, in an appeal. I don't understand with an appeal, my ask is that the board looks at my appeal and says. That here, there's some legal precedent here, or there is not some legal precedent that. The zoning bylaws read that you can or cannot have this. I don't understand why that would then bring into a conversation of hardships. I think that's really not the matter.
Because the appeal is the same thing as, I mean, to resolve the appeal, you need to get a variance. So if we grant the variance, your appeal was granted.
To a mistreatment by a building inspector or any kind of building official has nothing to do with.
Right, so if we say yes, you're granted this variance, you won your appeal. If we say no, you can't have a variance, then you lost your appeal.
Okay.
But you can appeal the appeal. You can appeal our decision if you want to, no, no matter what it is. Anybody can appeal our decision. But you're gonna, you're gonna understand something as well. The four criteria that I'm reading to you, Mr. Bush, that, that are required for variance to be granted. They, they're not written by the town. These are, these are laws that are written by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that can't be waived. I mean, you, you have to meet these four criteria for variance to be, to be granted. There's, there's nothing. That we can do about that. Uh, you would have to, i- if. If, if you wanted to change our decision, you'd have to go in front of a judge, which is certainly is your right. And I could explain to you at the end of the, at the end of the hearing. If you're aggrieved by our decision, what steps you could take. To appeal our decision, but I'll, I'll wait till the end of the hearing to do that. I just. Want to try to, to make you understand what the four criteria are that need to be proved for variance to be granted.
Okay, so I'm actually looking at the bylaws right now because I, I remember reading something different, uh. Regarding just restricting to land. Or building.
Well, this. Uh. And there's a couple of different courses of action that would be open to you here. Um. If, and I don't, I don't have any idea how this vote would go, but if you got, um, got voted down, if your appeal from the building inspector got. Denied, you would have to wait two years before you could reapply, or you would have to appeal it to court. Um, if you want to. Read over what their conditions for an appeal are, you could do a couple of different things. You could. Uh, you could withdraw your, um, your appeal without prejudice, which means that you could reapply it another time. And you wouldn't have to wait to two years. Or you could ask us to give you an extension for you. To look around, to, to look at all of this criteria and see if you want to study it a little bit more. Um, uh, uh, we, for a variance, we've got ninety days to make our decision. Unless you in writing ask us for a continuance. So. You could do a couple of different things. Like I say, you could withdraw your appeal. Until you look at it closer and, and really. Take a very hard look at the four criteria for an appeal to be granted. Um, or you could in writing ask us, uh, to continue it for you to review this, but, um. But that, that's up to you. I mean, it, uh. I don't want to give you too much information here too quick, but it, it, it sounds to me like you didn't have a chance to. How should I put this? That you, you didn't have a chance to really look at what the conditions for getting an appeal granted are. Uh, it, it seems like that, you know, I, I gotta keep reading them to you when you haven't, um. Had a chance to look them over. If you haven't had a chance to look them over very carefully, then. Certainly you could ask the question to continue it till you had a chance to do that. But that's, again, that's up to you. That's your decision.
So I'm reading in the bylaws right now. It says the provisions of the bylaw involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. To the appellant where desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent or the purpose of this bylaw, but not otherwise. So I guess that differs from what you were just stating, Dave, but where, where are you? I guess what section of the bylaw are you referring to or the?
Uh, well, like now.
Why don't we, can we go the other way around? Why don't you tell us where you read that so I can be on the same page as you?
Six point four point three.
One more time?
Six point four point three.
Six point four point.
Excuse me, six point four three, no.
Six point four three.
Uh, I got the latest version up. I think.
Page one twenty-four.
Yeah.
One twenty-four.
Well, I was very confident financial was in there.
Okay, I'm, I'm reading what you're looking at, Mr. Bush, but provisions of this by law would involve substantial hardship. I, again, what's the substantial hardship? If you weren't able to build an accessory building right now?
Uh, well, I, I guess I explained the financial one, which is included in here. Uh, and it opens it up for, or otherwise. So I guess my case is that. I would like to use the land. It's hardship, uh, that I need to bring a truck there, packed up with everything for the day. Uh, and bring that back out of there. Uh, it's also a financial hardship in that I can't build that house right now. Um, so I, I guess there's two examples that fall under the provisions here.
Uh. Yeah. I, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, I'm, I'm reading word for word what, what, what you're saying here, but, um. I mean, I'm certain, certainly not intentionally being contrary, but I, I'm just not seeing it, to be honest with you.
In section six point four three?
Oh, no, 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 I mean, I can, I can see it. I'm physically looking at it right now and reading it. I'm just not looking at it and interpreting it the same way you are.
Well, I, I guess substantial hardship. Financial or otherwise, uh, I mean, my experience is or otherwise opens it up to a lot of other areas. Uh, it's up to the board to. Make that determination, but I, I thought I heard you say that I could not.
So.
Try to prove it through financial. I mean, these are three terms I'm trying to. Uh, abide by through the, through the regulations here, um.
Okay, well, e-explain to me. One more time, if, let's just say for the sake of argument, again, I don't have any idea how this vote's gonna go, but let's just say for the sake of argument. That you got denied your variance request. What would be the substantial hardship to you because of that? What? What would the, what would the cause of our denial make a hardship for you? How would that be?
Uh, that I can't use the land that I pay taxes on to the, uh, what I perceive as in accordance with the bylaws.
Well, yeah, but. You, you could use the land. You could build a house on it. We're not saying you can't do anything there. We're just saying. You need to build a house first.
Well, yeah, I mean, define hardship. I mean, that's, it's kind of a ambiguous term.
I.
Uh, I think it's for the board to listen and say like, yeah, we get it. This doesn't, you know, like, let's put these. Let's put these hardships aside. Like, is there any detriment to the neighborhood? Uh, is there any detriment to the land or the property of the town or the? Uh, or is this in direct conflict with the zoning bylaws, which I think in my. Appeal letter, um, you know, certainly there's. There's probably more to be talked about there, um, but I, yeah, I'm just not seeing how this is greatly affecting, um. Anything.
Yeah, I did, part of, part of the issue, this is why it's kind of very hard to be on this board, is that. When you go for a special permit, we have a lot of leeway that we can, that we can give. When it comes to a variance, it's much more black and white and we have to. Give an answer that we think can stand up in court, to use Dave's words, um.
Sure.
Um. And it, it, again, it, it's very, it, we don't get to use our emotions and feel bad for you and still grant it, where. The, um, special permit. You create a good argument and you shed a tear and we're much more sympathetic. Where a variance is very, very, very black and white. You have to meet, like, you have to meet. This criteria in order for it to be granted.
Sure.
And, and I just don't want you to get frustrated and give up on arguing because. Um, again, I, I think with. Uh. Yeah, just. Yeah, I, I, I guess I'm battling, but. It is very black and white. We don't have a lot of legroom. You have to prove your case in order for this to be passed. Or for you to win this appeal.
No, understood. Uh, and looking at the provisions of the bylaws here, I guess I'm going to prove my case that my substantial hardship is financial. Uh, in that I can't build the home now. And also, if, uh, you know, Dave, you had suggested that the physical conditions of the land, which I don't see in here, but. Um, you know, uh, if they're in here, I guess I've done a word search in here, uh, control find and can't find that, but. Um, that's, uh, that is the hardship. It's a financial hardship, uh, not only because we can't build the house right now, it's also financial hardship because I'm paying taxes. On a property that should clearly allow me to be able to use that property. Uh, in accordance with the bylaws.
You can still use a property though.
Not to the extent that I would like to.
Well, in there lies the hardship situation.
Right, that I could define that as a hardship, yeah.
He went, what?
You're restricting, you're restricting a property that I pay high amounts of taxes on, and, and that's a hardship, right? Uh, that.
I, I. I have to, um, is, uh, is the chairman, Mr. Bush, I have to write a, um. I, I have to write the decision and I have to write what's called the defensible decision. Um, that I have to assume that, um, that, that this is going to get appealed. And that I've got to give town council. Some, uh, very compelling ammunition to win our case in court. Uh, it, so it has to be beyond a shadow of a doubt why your variance should be granted. Uh, it's, um.
Yeah, or it should be beyond a shadow of doubt why it should be denied, right? Um, in that, and that's why I was trying to explain through the zoning bylaws, which are certainly, uh, in my view, not written, uh, in. You know, I, I can't really, I guess in my own personal view. Um, the writer's intent, uh, is far different. I read contracts every single day. The contract is the contract. These, these words are those words, uh, and that's what you go by, not, not somebody who wrote it, I don't know how many years ago, twenty years ago, who knows what their intent was?
Nineteen seventy-three.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Nineteen seventy-three was when the first bylaw.
Nineteen seventy-three, so we can go find that gentleman and see what he intended, like, I, I think. I don't know, maybe that would stand up in court, but I, it, it hasn't for me. So.
If I could interrupt, part of the intent is also what has been done. Since nineteen seventy-three, so in the last fifty years. Um, we have been going by this, uh, original intent. And that is their prin- principal structure needs to be there first before, uh, primary structure has to be there first before the secondary structure. So there is precedence.
Has anybody appealed that decision?
How long have you?
Someone's opinion, the building is.
Dave, oh, Dave, Dave's frozen. But I know Terry is probably the second senior person on this, uh. On the, on the board, but I know that I, I don't know how long I've been on the board. I've never seen it being appealed. But Terry, have you? Oh, Dave's back. You're gone.
Not that I can recall.
I don't know what.
Uh, Dave. Uh, Mr. Bush had said that had, he had asked whether any accessory use. Denial has ever been appealed to the board and I said, I don't remember it. Terry said he didn't remember it. I don't know if you did. You've been on the longest.
No, I, um, I, I don't remember it in a town of Ashburnham. I'm certain if you looked up case law. That somebody somewhere must have appealed it in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but I'm not familiar with it ever happening in Ashburnham.
Yeah, so I guess therefore I would argue there's really no precedence. Um, you know, it's easy to say no. Uh, and not think about it afterwards, right? Uh, when you stop and think about it and read through the terms and what it actually says. Uh, and a board of five smart people get together and look at it and I, I can tell by the tone that people. Are looking at it saying, wow, that could be a lot clearer. And if you've read this. Town of Sterling's bylaws, like, if that was the intent, that was a really easy statement to put in there, like Sterling did.
Yeah, but Sterling is.
Many other towns.
Let's be clear, let's be clear. Sterling is Sterling and Ashburnham is Ashburnham and Westminster is Westminster. So whatever Sterling does down there, that's their whole gig. Ashburnham has theirs and Westminster has theirs too.
Yeah, we're, we're literally on opposite ends of the alphabet here. Uh, and, um, and we have to stay focused on what's happening in Ashburnham and what the Ashburnham bylaws say. Well, um. I, um, do you, uh, I. Do you, do you have anything new, Mr. Bush, or anything that, that's different? I, I think that we should probably try to move on here. Have you given any consideration about withdrawing your appeal without prejudice to? Um, be able to come back again, or have you looked at, um? It possibly given, uh, right, asking us in writing for a continuance, or do you want to? Let the chips fall where they made. I'm, I'm just trying to give you every option that's out there that's available to you.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think I've certainly proved the case here on the zoning bylaws. I know people are trying to pick it apart of it, but I'm. Pretty well convinced there's a, a very good legal argument there. Um, that's, I, I've read it fifteen times over. Uh, I had my journey reading it over. Uh, I crafted the language and it. It, it makes sense. It does not set any, any, uh, precedent of existence of these principal uses. Uh, so I'm very confident there. Uh, second to that, again, meeting this variance, I feel like people are. Maybe working against me on this board, uh, to be quite honestly, uh, in, you know, in not having clear, first of all, coming up with unclear. Uh, conditions which we need to meet. Uh, I'm still not sure. What those conditions are after I read section six point four three or pointed out section six point four three. Uh, but, um, so I'm, I'm maybe not even clear on what those conditions are at this point. Does the board have a? Consensus of what the conditions are, because there was something else read at the beginning of this meeting, which do not jive with section six point four three.
Um. I. I don't really know that because we haven't gone into deliberations yet, so. I, it's, I. I, I really can't do that. I can't tell you how I feel. The vote of the board may go. I, I won't know.
No, that wasn't my ask, um, Dave, sorry if I was unclear there. Um, my ask was, what are the, what are the conditions? What is your interpretation of the conditions that I need to prove to you? Because those seem to have changed during this meeting.
Uh, no, they're still the same. It's, there's going to be special conditions affecting the land of building hardship with a land of building. Not the applicant, consistent with the intent of the bylaw, not harmful to the public good or neighborhood. Uh, that's it in a nutshell.
Okay, so that's different than section six point four three. Where, where are you getting your?
Well, section six point four three, I, I will admit is a little bit more detailed and a little bit longer, but it's more. It's more generalized. Um, what, what I have is, um. Uh, uh, basically a cheat sheet from the state that says how to conduct the, um, the. Uh, uh, basically a cheat sheet from the state that says how to conduct the, um, the hearing. And what could, what, what needs to be proved for a special permit or variance. So I'm just reading you what needs to be proved. Um, as a various, did, did you say you had an attorney?
Uh, yeah, I have an attorney.
Is, um, is he here? Would he like to be heard?
No.
Uh, okay.
Pretty well have this understood. Um, so, yeah, no, I guess that is unclear as well. I'm, I'm, I came here wanting to respond to what the variance in the appeal process was, and it said. What is your hardships, uh, financially or otherwise? Uh, and I was being asked something different from the get-go of this meeting. Uh, and I feel like I raised some contentions. Uh, with a few members of the board, uh, you know. And, uh, so I'd like to make sure that is clear because I'm getting inconsistencies here. I hope you can appreciate that.
Uh, Dave, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty clear on where Mr. Bush is right now. I'd, I'd like to hear about anybody else that wants to make comments and move this along.
Okay, well, um, let me just, uh, Mr. Bush, you have, um, do you have anything? Else that you would like to add? I'm not closing the hearing yet, but, um. You know, I, I would like to, to bring the hearing to a close at, at some sort of reasonable hour, and there may be some abutters or some other board members that would like to be heard. And, um, i- if you don't mind, could I move on to that aspect of the hearing? And, and if you have anything else that you would like to add? After you hear what, um, if there's anybody else that has anything to say about this. Uh, uh, would that be okay with you, Mr. Bush, if you're, if you're done with your presentation for right now?
Uh, yeah, I think just to reiterate, you know, obviously we, we are not seeing eye to eye on the, uh, on these laws, and I think the only. Rebuttal I had to that was the, there was maybe some intent, uh, behind these that the writer had, and so. Um, and then second to that, um, you know, I think I've. According to what I was prepared for anyways, which I think are the official documents, the Ashburnham zoning bylaws. Uh, is what we're going by here. Uh, I've proved a financial or otherwise hardship, um, that leaves it pretty well open for variance and appeal. Uh, in my opinion, uh, and it seemed like the board was taking a harder stance that I, I need a much higher bar to pass through this. Um, so I'm going off what's written. Uh, not only with my interpretation, uh, of the zoning body laws rather than, you know, people's opinions, uh, and then also. Uh, I'm going off of this variance, uh, procedure, uh, and that's why I was confused from the get-go because we seem to be, uh, varying from what I know.
Okay, all right, you're certainly entitled to your opinion. I've got, uh, nothing against that. So if, at this point, for the sake of moving things along, I'm not closing the hearing. I'm not saying that you can't add anything more, but, uh, right now what I'd like to do. Is, um, see if there's any other board members from any other boards in town that would like to be heard on this issue.
Uh, this is Sarah Colgan. I'm the building commissioner. I just wanted to clarify, uh, what Dave was quoting from is Mass General Laws, Chapter forty A, which is what. Uh, discusses zoning and there's a section on variances. And that is where it needs to be specific to the shape, soil and topography of the lot. Um, it, there, it's, it, the Ashburnham bylaws aren't that well written, um, but. The section, uh, six point four three isn't the only thing that they need to take into account. They need to comply with Mass General Laws.
Yeah, but it's at your discretion of the town to adopt those. Those are basically best practices, right? Uh, and you guys have made that decision into this bylaw.
That's not the way it works.
Um. So Sarah, is my, is my understanding that state law supersedes town laws?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, is there any other board members or any other boards that would like to be heard on this issue? Okay, is there any, um, residents or, or anybody in, uh, town that's been listening in on this that would like to be heard on this?
Yeah, some attorney, Matthew Christensen, and I'm representing, uh, Mr. Carlo Barberi, who is the abutter. Uh, to the property and it would appear that is the closest abutter to where the proposed shed would be located.
Okay, uh, what would you, what would you like to say about this?
Well, first of all, I have a copy of the letter, uh, I guess from the building commissioner. I only have one page. I don't have another page that's signed, but it does seem to say everything that, that has been mentioned before. And I, I have looked into this myself on behalf of Mr. Barbarian. I've looked up some case law pertaining to. The relationship between accessory use and primary or principal use, and I, I respectfully. Uh, think Mr. Bush is, is wrong. I think the building inspector is absolutely correct. Um, I, I found a case, it's a fairly recent case, it's of the land court. And, uh, something you're probably all familiar with, the several years ago, the state permitted or legalized the. Cultivation and, and sale of marijuana. And in response to that, the town of Charlton passed a bylaw prohibiting. Uh, the cultivation or sale of any non-medical marijuana. And the case was brought, the town sued and lost, uh. In a, in a hearing two years ago in the land court where they said that, one, that there was already a town bylaw which provided for. Um, agricultural use and that the, the manner in which marijuana be cultivated, it fell within that. And then it gets into the question of accessory use that the processing and sale of it is an accessory use that was permitted incidental to the primary use. Now, um, so, but there are several cases out there, but these are the two ones I found, and then I found another one from two thousand and three from the appeals court. Which is Burnham versus the town of Hadley. And in that decision, there was an incidental use to a home. And the, it was a business, it was, uh, the wife had a business and it grew and grew and grew, and they said this is no longer incidental to the residential use of the property. And the building inspector closed them down and the appeals court upheld it. And I thought a very cute, but very poignant and very accurate, uh. Uh, comment was made in the opinion by, uh, Justice Mel Greenberg. Actually. Mel Greenberg used to be a judge in the Gardner District Court and then the Superior Court and then on the appeals court bench. And he says, in other words, the tail cannot wag the dog. In this case, we need a dog. There has to be a principal use, not a possible principal use, an actual principal use. There is no actual principal use. Mr. Bush has indicated that he wants to erect a home at some time. And that's fine. He can go in, he can file an application for a building permit. Request the permit and I, I don't know what decisions the building commissioner will make, but, uh. We all know there's, there's, this is waterfront property down near Lake Watatic, so there's ton, ton issues and. Anything that would happen within a hundred feet of the lake would be an issue. Um, but that's another issue for another day. He says he plans to build a house down there, but there's no application for a building permit. There is no building permit. There is no house there. There is no primary use, period. Um, in, in, in weighing the issue of the, uh, there being a financial hardship. There's a number of cases of the appellate and the state Supreme Courts would deal with. What is a substantial hardship? It's not a financial hardship. It's much more than that. It's a substantial hardship. And the substantial hard, and all he's claiming here is gee, I pay all these taxes on that property. Well, the predecessor paid them, the next person's going to pay them. The taxes are what they are. We all pay them. That's not, that's not a hardship. Yeah, you're paying taxes. If you don't want to pay the taxes, get rid of the property, but. That's not a substantial hardship to support. Um, to support a variance. A variance is a very, very difficult. Uh, uh, thing to get. It's not a matter of right. And I don't hear anything that he said tonight that meet any of those criteria. And miss, I'm sorry, the culgen, um. You, you correctly, you, you alluded to, uh, chapter forty-eight, specifically chapter forty-eight, section ten is the statute. Which, which gives us the statutory authority for the issue with some variances and the criteria that's there. That criteria is what is mirrored. In the building applicant, the, the, the variance application that's right here. Um, that's not a question of, of town law, that's state law. The town can't change that. That's the state law mandating the very restrictive standards to getting a variance. Another thing I pointed as a practical matter, um, I have not seen anything that really shows the size of this building, the height of the building. The dimensions of the building or where it would be located in, in relation to any property lines. I just see a little box drawn. On some property that is very near my client's property. And in fact, my client has an older house, which I believe predated zoning and I. When I was looking at it the other day, I, I think that the property, his home is pretty close to the property line, so. He has some parents' concerns of where this. Uh, this shed would be in relation to his land and obstructing his view looking down to the lake. Um.
Yeah, I, I, we need to clarify something there. His, his home does not predate, uh, zoning. It was built in the eighties. When was the property sold to you, Carlo? Uh, by nineteen eighty-ish? So just for the board's clear, uh, Carlo owns a property that's literally feet off of my property, which is illegally built.
It's not a question of when he bought it, sir. It's a question of when it was built.
Hold, hold on a minute, hold on. Matt, just that if, if you guys start talking in be- in between each other. To each other, it's going to end up into an open forum here.
Certainly, Mr. Perry.
It'll lose control of the hearing and we'll never get anywhere. Um, so, uh, when, when Matt, when you're, when you're done speaking. Uh, you can, uh. Uh, I think I might have, uh, froze up here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, uh, Matt, when, when you're done giving your presentation on your client's behalf, I'll ask Mr. Bush. What he has to say and then we'll, uh, we'll carry on from there.
Actually, I was done, Mr. Perry. Mr. Bush raised the question about my client having bought the property in the eighties, which I believe is correct. But I believe that the building was there. Was it there before then?
Yeah.
I, I think, yeah, I, I've just seen the building and how old it is. I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure without researching records that it was there prior to nineteen seventy-three when the, the zoning law was.
Okay, well, again, that, again, that's not the issue. What, we have to stay focused on what the issue is, and the issue is. Um, should Mr. Bush be granted a variance to build an accessory building before the primary building is, is installed? Uh, what buildings are, are budding him really are not the issue here. If we, if we don't stay focused, we'll never get through this meeting. Um, is there anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Bush?
Uh, yeah, I guess I wasn't making a connection with your Marijuana Institute's, um, connection there, but the second, uh, one of it, again, I. Tie this back to what I'm looking at for the zoning bylaws and exactly what it says for principal use. I know you, you referenced several. Case law, uh, they seem to be apples to oranges, uh, because they obviously have different bylaws, uh, and different provisions and probably much. Different language, uh, used within there. And I, I don't know, I guess Mr. Stevenson, I'm not sure, uh, Christensen, excuse me. Uh, if you're not following, uh, I, I guess I'd like to hear why, uh, the definition of principal use and it's. Uh, you know, which is the key term of this whole thing is not. Uh, very clear in that it does not say it must exist. There's nowhere in here. It says it must exist. There is no provision here that says it must exist.
Are you asking me, on, and you want me to respond, Mr. Perry?
Um, yeah, you could do that, Matt. We just gotta, like I said, I, I'm not trying to be contrary or rude or stop anyone from being heard. I just, I can't let this, this hearing turn into an open forum, or we just will, we'll never get out of here.
I, I, this is an excerpt, this is the case that I was just alluding to, um, from the land court, Valley Green Grove versus, uh. Town of Charlton, and there's a provision in here and it reads that in, in incidental or accessory use under a zoning law is a use. Which is dependent on or pertains to the principal or main use. It's got to be the actual use. Now, that's a decision of the land court, but it's supported that proposition. They cite a case of the town of Needham. Versus Winslow Nurseries from nineteen fifty-three. Uh, it's a decision of the state Supreme Court. But all these cases in here that get into subordinate or accessory uses. All deal with what they're subordinate or accessory to. And in this case, there is nothing, there is no principal use.
That's case law, Matt?
That's case law. It's, uh. It's a nineteen, two thou- August twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen decision of the, uh, land court.
Uh, Matt, what was the definition of principal use in that case?
It, it's, it, this is the case that deals with, um. Well, the overall case is dealing with the, the question of whether cultivation, whether processing and sale of marijuana. Was an accessory use to the cultivation of marijuana, and in this case, the court said it was. But when the court was getting it, in, in, in the cultivation of marijuana, the processing marijuana. Is, is not the issue here, but the question is, is how you define an accessory use as opposed to a principal use? That's what this case is about, and that's what this case says incidental. I'll read further into that case. Whether we use is incidental. Involves a determination as to one, whether the use is subordinate and minor in significance to the primary use. Though what is not required to be smaller than the principal use. And that cites a case from, uh, the appeals court from nineteen ninety-eight. And whether there is a reasonable relationship between the use in question and the primary use of the property. And that cites some other cases of the state Supreme Court, but what that's saying is. You, you've got to have the primary use of the property, and that's what does not exist here.
Well, if it says that you have to have the primary use of the property, I guess, Matt, I would, I'd. Like you to read the, the definition of principal use here because it does not say that it must exist. It actually says for which the lot. Or structure is designed, arranged or intended, or for which it may be used. Those are terms that do not say exist. They are.
I'm not, I don't need, need from specific town. I think what I've seen here is very, very clear. That there needs to be a primary use before you can determine what an accessory uses. Uh, one thing I did point out is that there are certain dimensional requirements to the, to the location and height of the accessory use. That are dependent on the, uh, location and height of the primary use. So if there is no primary use, how do you calculate those dimensions?
Um, it also says that it's customarily incidental, so customarily, you don't have to have that there. Customarily is, hey, a shed is customarily. Uh, not the principal use, so I, I don't know. I, I think you have some apples and oranges going on.
I can understand your opinion, but I think we're, we're starting to get into some redundancy here and. Nobody's saying anything new. Uh, I appreciate Matt's opinion. I appreciate your opinion as well. But in, unless there's anything new that any board members want to ask, or anything new that we hasn't already been covered. Before, Mr. Bush, I, I think that what I'm going to do is I'm going to start leaning towards bringing this hearing to a close unless there's something else you would like to add. That there's, um, new or more pertinent information that you haven't discussed with us before.
Uh, no, only that if the board is considering, uh, Mr. Barbari's comments about, uh, this being close to his residence. Uh, I think the board should do work there if that's going to influence because, uh, you know, considering whether or not it has detriment on neighbors or other areas. Uh, again, I'm very positive that that home was built illegally, additioned onto it, and he's actually no longer allowed to make additions on that house per the building inspector.
Oh, I, I, I understand your opinion, but again, by definition, this is a public hearing. So I can't not hear the public. The public has a right to give us.
I understand. I just want to make sure that, uh, you know, it gets taken in context, uh, with some of the public comment. If you can say that.
Okay, um, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, no, I believe that's it.
Uh, do the board members have anything else you'd like to ask?
I don't recall any dimensions being, uh, included in this, um, accessory building.
Uh, it will be approximately fourteen by twenty-six, twenty-eight. Or so. Uh, and then I listed all the setbacks on the actual application, so it meets all the setback requirements. That eliminates a drop off the last survey.
What was the height?
Uh, it shouldn't be any more than. No more than sixteen feet.
Was it sixteen?
Yeah, no more than sixteen. It's not fully designed yet. I mean, I got shot down before I even got to that point. Generally speaking, it's going to be one of those Reed's Berry or, uh, I forget the other company, Eastern Shed, you know, one of those pre-built sheds. A good picture.
That's all. Terry, have you, have your questions been? Your questions have been answered, Terry? Do you have anything else you'd like to ask? Okay. Uh, Richard, is there anything else you'd like to ask? Any other input you have?
Do we get a site plan? I, I have my packet and I'm trying to go through it as quick as I can. Would you get, do we get a site plan?
Oh, he said sixteen, sixteen feet down.
Yeah, well. We did, but it shows where a proposed house might go. It doesn't show where the shed's going to go.
Right, it's in the lower, lower part.
Right, right, the lower part does show the shed.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Down by the lake.
Yep, 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 okay.
Uh, Mark, you got anything else you'd like to add?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Uh, Rich, you're all set?
Yeah, I, I think I'm good. Um. Y- yeah.
Yep, okay, and now Bob, you're all set?
Yeah.
Terry, you're all set too?
Yes.
Okay, uh, uh, Mr. Mr. Bush, before I close the hearing, did you give any consideration into into asking the board for a continuance, which would have to be in writing, but you could do that? Or have you given any consideration to withdrawing your appeal without prejudice?
No, the continuance, I I guess I'm still at a loss here of trying to deal with National Housing Bylaws and whether or not we've addressed the hardships. So that was something I I feel like I'm dealing with double standard here, which is that we're gonna, that we're gonna try and prove, what do I need to prove to the board? Is it what's written in here or the state, which, you know, I would imagine we should be going by the six point four three. Just to be clear with Mr. Christensen, that my primary hardship was not the tax example. It was building the home at this point.
Okay, well, well, certainly, whatever our decision is, you or anybody can appeal our decision and I'll I'll explain that process to you. I don't think there's any more new information that anybody's going to to put in, so.
Dave, would you, sorry to interrupt, would you like me to read the relevant section of forty A that the applicant seems to be unaware of, which is what what you as a board need to comply with? I can read a couple of sentences. It might help.
Okay, I've got that right in front of me too. Does the board have any objections to that?
No, no, I think, no.
Okay, well, if I'll clarify anything to the appellate, I'm all for it. If you just want to, let me know what chapter and page it is there so I can open up.
So this is Mass General Laws, such, Chapter forty A, Section ten, variances. The permit granting authority shall have the power after.
What page is that on, Sarah?
This is, this is off the state's website. It doesn't have a page. This is the.
Section ten.
Section ten, okay. Hold on a second. I'm looking at this right now.
The permit granting authority shall have the power after a public hearing for which notice has been given and by production and posting and as provided in Section eleven by mailing to all parties in interest to grant upon appeal or upon petition with respect to particular land or structures, a variance from the terms of the applicable zoning ordinance or bylaw where such permit granting authority specifically finds that, this is the important part, owing to circumstances related to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or appellant. And desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance or bylaw. I think that's the part that's not clear in our section on variances, but that's, that's the section on the state law, in the state law on variances that's relevant to the decision-making that this body needs to to do. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
The shape soil and topography, a hardship related to the shape soil and topography of the lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think I made a case for that aspect as well.
Okay, with all that said, I think that I don't think anybody's gonna need new to add here.
You may want to ask the public again. I see somebody else on here that we haven't heard from. I don't know if they want to be heard or not.
Okay, is there somebody else on here that I that I haven't noticed that would like to be heard on this issue before I close the hearing? No, I guess not. Okay, with that said, what I'll do is I will close this hearing. And after I close the hearing, what happens is, once the hearing is closed, we can't take in any more information from anybody. So if anybody's got anything to say that they want to be heard, they should say it now because once the hearing's closed, we can't take in any more information, although we could ask for specific clarification on some issues, but we can't take in any more information. We have, this is a variance, so we have a hundred days to make our decision, I think. So that's when we got to get the decision in. I think we have, we have fourteen days to put the decision, but anyway, we'd never, we'd never take that long. Almost a hundred percent of the time, we go into deliberations the same evening as we have the hearing. That way, we can, we can get the deliberations done. We can get our decision made and we can vote on it while it's all fresh in our minds. I can't guarantee we're gonna go into deliberations tonight, but if we do, you're more than welcome to stay on the Zoom meeting and listen in. You just, no one can add anything, any information, nobody can say anything. The deliberations are just between the board. But again, it's a public meeting, a public hearing, so you're more than, you're more than welcome to listen to our deliberations and listen to our vote and how we came to our vote. Now, as far as our vote goes, anybody has the right to to appeal our decision. From the time that the decision is stamped in with the town clerk, you have twenty days to appeal our decision. You can appeal our decision with the with the Superior Court or or Land Court. But that twenty-day appeal period starts ticking when the town clerk stamps our decision in. If we can do it tonight, which I believe we probably can, we'll go into deliberations, we'll have the vote, we'll make our decision. I will write up our decision tonight. I will drop it off to the land use clerk. She'll type it up and she'll get it to the town clerk probably sometime tomorrow so that she can stamp it in so that that twenty-day appeal period starts ticking. No matter what our decision ends up being, it it is supposed to be attached to the deed of the property. If it's favorable, it has to be attached. If it's not favorable, it has to be attached. But no matter which way our vote goes, it is subject to appeal by anybody. With that said, nobody has anything else that they'd like to add, so I can close the hearing?
Just a quick question, Dave, if you don't mind. You said it was twenty days from when the town clerk stamps that, that the appeal.
Correct. That's, that's, that's when the clock starts ticking to get your, to get your appeal in. And you can appeal it to to Worcester District Court, you can appeal it to Land Court. You could appear, appeal it to Fitchburg District Court. There's, there's a few different venues.
Doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be Worcester with the with the county, no.
Excuse me?
Doesn't have to be Worcester, no.
Yeah, you could, yeah, you could appeal it in Worcester, yes.
Dave, if I may, it would have to be appealed to the Winchon District Court or the Superior Court or the Land Court. Okay, if it's appealed to the Winchon District Court, somebody has the right to remove it to Superior Court.
Yeah, okay, yeah, there's there's several different venues that anybody can go to to appeal our decision. So our word isn't etched in granite. If you, if you choose to, you can appeal our decision. That's certainly your right. And and like I say, the twenty-day appeal period starts ticking the the day that the town clerk stamps the decision in. And with any luck, I'll be able to write up the decision tonight and I'll get it to Heather, who is the land use clerk tomorrow. And she's really, really good. She's really proficient. She'll, she will type up the decision probably tomorrow. She tries to get that done right away and gets it into the, the town clerk as quickly as possible. So with all that said, I think I've covered all the bases. Any board members think I've forgotten anything or left anything out?
Can you do me a, go ahead, Terry, sorry.
That's it, I'm done.
Okay, with that said,
Do you want, yeah, just one more time? Just so maybe someone can read the room a little bit better. Go over one more time if someone were to rescind their application, how they would go about that? Because it is two years that if they get denied, we'll do anything with regards to this. Is that accurate?
That's called a withdrawal without prejudice. Mr. Bush, like I explained to you a couple of times before, if you chose to, you could write a letter withdrawing your appeal and let us know tonight at the hearing that that was something you would like to do. If you do want to withdraw your appeal without prejudice, that means you've withdrawn it and we don't have anything to vote on is except whether or not to accept your request. And then what you could do is you could reapply at any time you chose to without waiting the two-year period. Because once we vote on it, you can't reapply for the same appeal within a two-year timeframe. But if you withdraw it without prejudice and you want to refine your argument, let's say, or anything, or you find some other information you want to bring to our attention, you would be able to do that again it within that two-year period.
No, but this doesn't prohibit me from special permit, right? Because this is an appeal.
What's that again?
It doesn't prohibit me from special permit because this is an appeal, correct?
This is an appeal for a variance.
It would, it would be an appeal for a special permit or a variance. You would, no matter what we determined it was, it's still an appeal. You, you're either repealing the building commissioner's decision, you need a special permit, or you're appealing the building commissioner's decision, you need a variance. One of, it's one of the two. It's still an appeal. It's just two different.
But on the onset, you guys voted this as a variance, not a special permit.
Correct, we did.
Yes.
We did.
I would only be barred from a variance, correct? Not a special permit in the future?
You would have to have some compelling evidence. See, what happens is the way that the, the cover letter is written up from the building commissioner, she puts down that you have a request for a special permit or a variance. That's, the zoning board has pretty broad powers for how they interpret whether or not a special permit or a variance is required. So what happens is the zoning enforcement officer writes special permit or variance so that we can decide which one it's, it's, it has to be. And we voted on it and discussed it that it had to be a variance. Because sometimes you need a variance and a special permit. Sometimes you need a special permit, not a variance. Sometimes you need a variance and not a special permit. It, that's why they write it up.
I guess I did not apply for a special permit, so. How is?
Well, the zoning board is within the zoning boards. It's within the scope of our authority to decide whether or not it's a special permit or a variance.
Right.
By the authority that's vested in us, we voted on it and discussed it that what you needed was a variance.
Understood, but the two-year law surrounding, like, I can't continuously appeal, right? Or go for a variance. Does it exclude me from special?
No. If you, if you, if you withdrew without prejudice, I don't know whether or not you could continually do that, but eventually the board would obviously get tired of it if you didn't, you know.
Well, he's got to have new information, Dave.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta have some more information. If you, that's if you withdraw without prejudice.
Dave, I'm not sure he understands what he's, what he's appealing at this point. That this is your appeal for a, for a variance. We had a finding at the beginning of the meeting that a variance was required. So now this appeal, everything we've gone through tonight is for you to get a variance for the shed. So it's not like you can now say, well, tomorrow I'm going to apply for a special permit. It comes back to us and we make a determination. Is this a special permit or a variance? In this case, if it's the same thing, it's probably going to be a variance.
So I guess why, why is an appeal? Or why is a variance required for an appeal? I've appealed a decision agreed by the buildings.
You would, you would appeal for a special permit or a variance. No matter whether it's a special permit or a variance is immaterial. You're still appealing the zoning enforcement officer's determination and denial. It doesn't make any difference what what it was. It's, you, you have to appeal for a special permit. You have to appeal for a variance. It's, it's an appeal is appeal, but you have to appeal one of the two.
What you applied for is an appeal to have your either special permit or variance heard. We had a finding at the beginning of the meeting that this would be a variance. So then we, you placed your argument for a variance. Everybody else weighed in. And now we're at the end of your appeal for a variance.
Correct, but nowhere in there did I apply for a special permit.
Now, let's, let's go through the beginning of the process. You went in to apply for a building permit to put up a shed. The zoning enforcement officer, being our building inspector, looked at it and said, you don't, for my, the reason you don't meet the criteria for what you want to do, whether you agree with it or not. She then sent you a denial letter stating, you, I'm denying you the, your, your application for permit until, and you must go to the zoning board. So then of appeals. So then you go to the zoning board and then it was determined whether sometimes it's for permit, special permit, sometimes for a variance, it comes to zoning board. The zoning board looks at it and says, oh, this is a special permit. Oh, this is a variance. They find, have a finding. Tonight, we had a finding for a, a variance. So then we proceed up the variance lane versus the special permit lane. And that's what, how we head from, from there, from point A to point B. Does that?
That does. Thank you for the explanation. But the, I guess the real question was, does that preclude me from a special permit in the future?
For, but see.
Don't meet the criteria.
No, no, but you talk, this is why I need clarification. When you say, does it, does it prevent me from doing a special permit for the shed, for the house, for whatever else you want to do? What, what, what is special permit for what are you referring?
For the shed.
Okay, so once, if it's a variance and we say, let's say we said, okay, no, you didn't meet the criteria. Because of that, without withdrawing that, what happens is, is that you cannot, doesn't matter whether special permit or variance, you can't come back to the board for two years to reapply to put up that shed. That's what that means.
You can, oh, yeah, I guess I'll have to look into that.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what it is. So, yeah, so.
When we had the finding for the, for the special permit or variance, we determined that you don't meet the criteria for a special permit. You met the criteria for a variance, so that's why we were hearing this tonight as a variance, because you do not meet the requirements for a special permit.
That takes out the equation.
Yeah, and I guess I'm still at a loss of why we didn't have a specific appeal hearing here regarding the facts of the interpretation of.
You did appeal. You stated your case why you thought you met the variance.
Maybe it's the terminology behind variance, but a variance seems to be that you guys are allowing something different, whereas I'm arguing that the zoning board or the zoning provisions allow for this use. So maybe it's the term.
No, the terminology, the terminology mistake that you're making is in the word appeal. Once you appeal, we determine if that appeal is a variance appeal or a special permit appeal. Okay, and we determine that the variance appeal. So an appeal can be two different things, one of two different things. A variance or a special permit.
If there's other factors involved.
Well, I was trying to. Yeah, but I was trying to dumb it down into A and B.
Okay.
And your appeal falls under variance. It will always fall under variance if you're talking about a shed or a thing without a primary structure already there. It will always fall under variance. So you cannot come in front of us again for two years for a shed without a primary residence. It will never, ever, 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 ever be a special permit.
That's not to say that you can't put in for a building permit to put up a primary residence or something like that. It's, it's only specific to the shed of what you're trying to do.
That's right. I understand that part.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I would like to interject one more thing on behalf of some confusion. Dave, can you, if there is a building permit. how long does someone need to act on that building permit? Or how long is that building permit valid?
A, a straight-up building permit?
Yes.
You have to make substantial progress within two years.
So my hypothetical question would be, if someone were to want to build a shed to hold their tools while they build a primary residence, could they get a variance for that shed because they have a permit to build a house?
So what, play that out, Rich. What happens if they have a permit for the house and then they don't build it?
That is exactly where I'm going. That's why I want clarification on.
I imagine something like that. It's, it's possible, but um it it um creates a lot of problems because when you, when you grant a special permit or a variance with the conditions and one of the conditions is it's going to be extended if you don't do A, B, or C within this timeframe. Although it would seem on face value that that's easy to enforce, it's not.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I love the outside-the-box thinking, uh, but I think I would have to put in a well and other things even to get that building permit, so.
You definitely would, for sure. Yeah. I was doing my best to help you, my friend. But if you, if you are not interested in picking outside the box, then uh, again, I would uh, try to read the room and.
I'll, I'll talk outside the box all night long, so.
All right, I'm ready to uh move forward, Dave.
Okay, um, is there um anything else that anybody wants to add?
I'm good.
Okay, I've, I've explained everything about the um, the hearing as best I can. Again, once the hearing is closed, we can't take in any more input, but you are more than welcome to stay on the Zoom meeting and listen to our deliberations if we do choose to go into them tonight. I don't think I can be any more clear than that. Everybody understand? Okay, with that, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second, Terry.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
You guys do this as a rule, I'm assuming.
Okay, Rich Archer, yes?
Yes.
Okay, everybody state your name and your vote, please, so that we can get it down. There was a couple people said it to the same. Okay. Bob?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, um, the hearing is closed. Um, I'll, uh, how does the uh board feel about going into deliberations this evening? Terry?
Nothing but time.
Yeah. Bob, Rich?
I'm, I'm good, yeah.
Okay, we all, okay, let's see. Bob, since I, your smiling face is right in front of me, would you like to start the deliberations? Uh, what's your input on this?
Um, I, I guess mine is just the uh the intent of the law as it was written and the precedence that this is the way it's been for the last fifty years is basically what I'm looking at.
Okay, Terry, what's your input on this?
I don't believe it meets the criteria for a variance.
Okay, um, Rich?
Um, I, I feel like we tried our very best to make this work for the applicant, but it, it certainly does not meet the criteria for variance.
Okay, Mark?
I, I agree. I, I don't think it does. It's, it's, it's a, uh, you know, without a principal use and I, I, I just don't think it does meet the criteria.
Okay, um, with that said, is there a uh motion to put this to a vote? Deliberations are all done. I don't think we can, I think we've, I agree with Rich. I think we covered every possible angle of this and every which way we could.
I, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we uh vote on the appeal as written.
Okay.
Yeah, but at, at, and how are you voting, Bob?
Oh, wait a minute, we're, we're making a motion to close deliberations and go into voting.
Sorry, I got ahead.
That's okay.
Yep, okay, I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Terry, aye.
Yep, Dave, yes?
Rich Archer, yes.
Yes.
Okay, let's put it to a vote. Um, is there a motion to approve or deny the variance as a, as a, as applied for?
I'll make a motion that we deny the permit.
Is there a second?
The variance, sorry, the variance.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor of Mark's motion? Mark?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Dave? Yes. The motion carries, uh, the appeal for variance twenty-one oh-two has been unanimously denied. Um, what I will do is I will write up the decision tonight. While it's fresh in my mind, I will drop it off to uh the land use clerk tomorrow morning so that she can type it up. And like I say, almost a hundred percent of the time, she brings it up to the town clerk so that she can stamp it in. So with any luck, the appeal, twenty-day appeal process will be starting uh tomorrow sometime. And uh it's very, very important that you, uh, if anybody wants to appeal our decision, that they do it within that twenty days. Cause if that twenty days goes by and nobody appeals it, then um, then they, then you, you can't appeal it after that. And again, you can appeal it in uh Winchton Court, Pittsburgh District Court, Worcester Superior Court, um, or Land Court if you chose. It's uh, it's three or four different venues you could go to to appeal our decision. With that, um, with that said, I think that we're all done with this, with this appeal and um do you guys, do we have any minutes to go over? Anything else, guys? Do you want to do that tonight?
Uh, there, there were some minutes that she said, um, yeah, I read them earlier. I, I didn't print it out, though.
Yeah.
Those were the minutes from the, from the uh, decision on the last hearing, correct? Did you guys read them?
Correct, yeah. Twenty-one oh-one.
Yeah.
Twenty-one oh-one, yep.
Uh, do we have some time to go over that stuff or?
Well, if everybody's read them, I have read them and I didn't see any issue with them.
I didn't either.
Yeah, I agree. Post-meeting stuff. I can make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, Dave Perry, yes?
Terry, yes.
Marcus.
Yes, Bob.
Okay, Rich?
Yes, I, am I on or no?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, okay, so the minutes um got approved. Uh, it was one of the thing that I, I wanted to go over was um concerning the decision for the last one. The uh the way that the decision was written um, wasn't exactly how I had, how I had wrote it. Um, Heather sent me a copy of my handwritten decision for twenty-one oh-one. Did you guys get a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay, and did you get a copy of the typed up decision?
Um, what do you mean by that?
Uh, well, I write a decision.
Emailed.
And then she types it.
Right.
Did you, did you guys get a copy of the notice of decision that Heather had typed up?
Yeah, she emailed it to us.
Okay, yeah, yep.
Guys, guys, this is Heather. I, I'm, Dave, I only sent you your handwritten copy.
Yeah.
Um, I sent them the first version and I did update the decision before it was mailed out to refer to the date of the plan.
Okay.
But I didn't send that to everyone, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. My uh, for some unknown reason, I don't know what Comcast is up to now. I thought they fixed the problem. I couldn't get on to my AOL account tonight, so I couldn't get any of my emails today. Maybe I can reboot my computer later on and see if I can get it to work, but sometimes Comcast just doesn't come through, so I didn't see. Your, so you sent a updated notice of decision out to us, Heather?
I did. I, no, I saw what you had handwritten versus what I said um, wrote up. And I did refer to the current date that the application was referring to.
Okay.
In the updated decisions.
Okay, what it, what it was, um, guys, it was really a, it was almost a typo. It was a very, very small thing, but it was the way that I wrote the decision was that does, the special permit was granted per the digital plans and were presented at the time of the hearing by grad engineering. And it just said something a little bit different on the original hearing. It didn't have the date of the plans. It said the board agrees per plans by grads engineering. It just wasn't there, it wasn't spit, um, date-specific. I assumed that somebody could have grabbed a different plan that grad engineering had drawn up and said, well, it just says plans by grads engineering. It doesn't specifically say which one. So I just, I, I try to be careful and very specific on the decisions I write up. And like I say, it was a very, very small, small thing. It was just a date that had to be put in there. It wasn't a huge issue, but it wasn't exactly the way I wrote it. It wasn't exactly what we had discussed, so I just wanted that to be changed. And apparently it was. Thank you, Heather. Anybody hear me? Am I locked out again?
No.
Okay.
I'll answer, I'll answer for Heather. You're welcome, Dave.
We were just ignoring you.
Uh, okay, well, at any rate, that, that's the only thing that I had was it was a, a very, very small thing, but it just wasn't exact and I, I really do like to try to write up our decisions right after we discuss them, so they're fresh in my mind and I'd like to see them as accurate as possible. So there was a very minor change in there and apparently Heather took care, care of it and that's a wonderful thing.
I, I just want to say, Rich, have your wife get your daughter at the next meeting.
Good one.
Not happening. That's my job.
Well, maybe.
Heather, we got some stuff coming up?
I don't think she's there anymore.
No, I am. I, yes, you do. Um, so there's one or two that are coming up. But we're hoping that it's going to be in person. And I don't know how it's gonna, we don't have the rules of what Zoom is versus in person yet. But there are a couple. Um, it's a good three or four weeks out, obviously, before I can post it and everything, but there are a couple.
Okay, good.
Are, are you saying that it could be in person and Zoom also for people that don't want to come?
We are not sure about that because we do not know what the state is gonna approve for open meeting laws.
Okay.
So we're not sure.
I was, um, I was right on the verge of asking the board about what they would think about um meeting in person outside, because I think we could have an outside meeting. Terry brought up a good point. The bugs would probably drive us crazy, or what if it was raining, but um I really would, I really miss meeting in person and I, I would like to try to do that again, so. Hopefully, if the governor does lift the state of emergency, which he's talking about doing on June fifteenth, if that happens, we could very possibly be meeting again in person.
Well, we met today on the light board.
You what?
We met in person with the light board today.
Oh, you can do that?
Yeah.
Uh, what, uh, what, what regulations were you following that says you could do that? I mean, if the light board could do it, couldn't the zoning board do it?
I, I can't imagine why, why we can't. We already had the lifting of the mask ma- mandate, right?
Well, I thought the governor was doing something on the twenty-ninth and then he was.
That's for, that's for everything inside. We wore masks. We wore masks inside.
Uh, would it, uh, how difficult would it be for you, Mark, to, to look up the statute or the guidelines or what the, or what the state had to say about how you could have a public meeting within what guidelines were there or regulations?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I can, you know, I, I could do that at the selectman, I believe, that they also met.
Yeah, all, all, all COVID restrictions are gone on the twenty-ninth, and if this is two or three weeks out, then.
Right, we're not gonna have a hearing before that anyway, so I don't see why we'd meet in person.
Okay, well, hey, Mark, if you, if you get the chance and you could find where those regs are that said that you could legally.
I'll find out, I'll find out, but.
But that's gonna change at the end of the month. It changes constantly.
Well, yeah, we're at twenty-ninth.
Yeah, but if you could do that, Mark, maybe forward it to Heather so that we can start moving ahead to try to get um.
Yeah, but there's not gonna be, there's not, yeah, I don't think it's gonna change on, on the twenty-ninth. We, and we wouldn't have a hearing before then anyways, but I'm happy to look for it.
We wouldn't, okay.
I'll look.
Alrighty, with that said, anybody else saw, got anything they'd like to say?
No, but, yeah.
I'd make a motion we close the hearing, right?
Yeah.
During the meeting.
I'll second that. Dave Perry, yes?
Marcus.
Terry, yes.
Yep. Unanimous.
Okay, I think we're all set.
Good, all right, ready. Good night, everybody.
Talk your own, bye.
Bye-bye.